Good evening. It's Tuesday, October 6th at 6:00 PM. And this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting. If you're joining us by Zoom, welcome. And we're glad that you're here. We start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under individual with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'll ask the city clerk to take the poll.
Harper Byden?
Present.
Doug Lastell?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
All city council members are present.
Thank you. Mayor Percham, are there any changes to the agenda, including additions or deletions?
No.
Thank you. So, we're on item number five, moving right along. The 2020 Mayor's Water Challenge Announcement. So I'm excited to share it with our community tonight. In the 2020 Mayor's Water Challenge, sponsored by the Weyland Foundation, the city of Montrose did quite well. We placed four in our population category. Cities in size between 5,000 and 29,900 people. And that was out of 379 cities in our size category. So placing in the top five at number four is something we can be really proud of. We had 1,300 pledges by our citizens to cut their water use by four and a half million gallons as part of this ninth annual National Mayor's Water Challenge. So here locally, we ran a little contest in association with the Weyland Foundation, where the city of Montrose purchased a geyser system, which is a portable shower system that uses less water than many portable shower systems. And what's really cool about the geyser system is that's a product that's made here in Montrose. And we worked with the Weyland Foundation and we asked them to pick randomly one of our participants, because we didn't have all 1,300 names, that's with the foundation. We asked them to send us the name of a random winner. And I'm excited tonight to announce that Mr. Gary Robertson is the winner of the geyser system portable water shower unit. And the city of Montrose is going to be getting in touch with Mr. Robertson tomorrow. So I want to thank all the citizens who participated and pledged to conserve the valuable resource that is water in our community. Thank you very much. Great. Next on our agenda is a call for public comment from non-agenda items. So this is, I'll be informal and I'll read the formal language. This is the time on our agenda where we take comments for things that aren't on our agenda. If you have something to talk about that's on our agenda, we ask that you do that on that item. And when we take non-agenda items, those are usually really helpful in letting city staff and city council know what kinds of things our citizens are thinking about and what kinds of things our citizens are concerned about. And while we don't respond during the meeting, because it's not an agenda item, it usually allows us to follow up individually with the individual making that public comment. With that said, it's my understanding that there may be folks who are here tonight to give their public comment about proposed possible apartment complex development going in in our town. And I say, well, we welcome your comments tonight. They would not be part of the official record for that project, because that public comment period hasn't started. That would happen if and when a developer submits a proposal for a planned development. And then at that point, there's a public comment period with a beginning and an end. It lasts 15 days and it's published. And during that time, all public comments are accepted and taken into the record. So if you want to comment about that, again, you can come tonight and talk to us about that, but it won't be part of the public record, because that hasn't happened yet. And so you may want to consider that your comments will have the most impact if you hold on to them until the process plays out. And then if there's a development plan, then you can make your public comments at a time where they'll count. That being said, I will read the official formal language for public comments, which says the following. "The call for public comment agenda time is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted." So all of that being said, are there folks tonight, and I'm looking to our technology director here, are there folks tonight who have joined us by Zoom who may be raising their hand or asking to be unmuted and make comment to city council tonight?
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, that was a lot of rigmarole then for nothing. No, I hope that it helps explain the process and that people feel like we want to be as transparent and forthcoming about the process with folks, so that they understand the best way to communicate with their city government through their elected leaders or through the city staff. So thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda item is number seven, which is approval of minutes. This is council consideration of the minutes of the September 15, 2020 special city council meeting and the September 15, 2020 regular city council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 15, 2020 special council meeting and the September 15, 2020 regular council meeting as presented.
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Did anyone see anything that needed to be changed or any problems with that? Okay, then please go ahead and report your vote electronically.
Okay.
Great, thank you. The motion passed, the minutes were approved unanimously. When we do our voting electronically, all the audio cuts out while we switch over to the electronic voting system. So if you're watching along and it just gets very quiet, it's just about a 30-second pause while the vote is counted electronically and then we come back to the live feed. Okay, next, oh, this is such a fun part of our meeting, is the youth council applicant interviews. So tonight, we have a number of young high school folks who have applied to be on the Montrose Youth City Council. And I will turn it over to our youth council coordinators, Michaela Henry and Kaylee Rillingberg for an introduction. Or if I'm supposed to jump right in and start interviewing them, I can do that too.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
We sure can.
Excellent, all right. So for you tonight, we have seven youth city councilors coming before you with applications this evening. And they should all be on the call right now too. I think you all should have a list of the names presented, who will be appearing for interviews this evening. And so however council likes to proceed, if you'd like to just go down that list, I think we can go ahead and begin with those interviews.
Great, and just to clarify, do we have seven tonight or six tonight and seven total?
Thank you, so there are six tonight, seven total.
Okay, good, I was afraid I might have missed somebody. Fantastic. Well, we've got a nice system here where we are just going to go in order of the information in our packets and in order from one end of the dais to the other. So I'm going to turn it over to my fellow councillor, Roy Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, I think the first person in our list is Cheyenne Storrs. Can we divide her? Thank you.
Hi. I love to hear you.
I was hoping, well, we get.
No video, but.
Okay. Well, that's okay.
Cheyenne, do you want to be on video or do you have a phone?
I'll go on video.
That would be fantastic. It helps us really put a face to a name as well, if you don't mind. And if you have.
Yes, I can video.
Okay, we're working on this IT. Is this what you guys do all day long in class already? Now you do more of it at night?
Yeah.
You should be able to start your video now.
Hi. Oh, I can't hear you.
A little difficult, at least.
There.
Okay.
Is that better?
Got it.
Can you hear me now, Cheyenne?
Yes.
Can you hear okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, I want to thank you for your application, first of all. And your credentials look great. So I have a question here. Each candidate will be asked a question by one of the city councilors. Where do you think you could help the city, the youth city council, make connections and build relationships in our community?
I think I can help build relationships with the lower-income families and with my fellow peers and the older generations.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
All right, Grace Hostemkiller.
Hi.
Hi, Grace.
It's letting me turn on my camera.
We're working on it. We'll see if we can let you in that way also.
She should have the ability to start her cam.
Can you try it now?
It doesn't look like it's letting me.
Okay. We're working on it.
All righty.
It might be something on her PC side, we might just need to move.
Okay, I think we'll move along and we'll, and we'll, we can hear you really well. So we'll go with that tonight.
All righty, perfect.
Hi, Grace, Dave Bowman here. And I've got a question for you. And I do want to know that, or you should know, tell mom and dad they can help on this. I know your dad and tell. Were you able to hear that, Grace?
No, I think we had a microphone issue there for a moment. I'm sorry, Mr. Bowman, would you please?
We lose her. I think doing this.
Yeah, I can hear you better now.
Okay, I think we're doing this just so all the adults in the community can see what our students must go through every day from eight to three, attending what virtual school looks like.
And our teachers.
And our teachers, and why so many people are frustrated by.
And our teachers.
Okay.
So are we there, Grace?
Yes, sir.
All right, I've got a question for you. Can you give an example of a time when you worked with someone whose opinion differed from your own? And if you didn't hear me before, if you sound like a lawyer, you're going to be in trouble. And curfew is not an acceptable subject.
All righty, don't worry, my parents are upstairs, so that's not going to be a problem tonight. I feel like I work with people who have difference of opinions all the time. I feel like a good example would be like at school, if we're having a group project. Especially these days, some people will, when we're in the group project and we're working on it, they will take their masks off and stuff. And of course, right now, when we're this close in school and we're in a tiny classroom, I mean, it's against the law and it's not a good thing. We've already had to shut down school pretty much. So my opinion is that I would like them to keep their mask on and sometimes they don't want to do that. So I just handle that by continuing to work with them. And I usually just space myself out, spread out from them, so I can maintain my social distancing. And usually the teacher will come by and tell them to put their mask on. But I feel like that's a common thing that we've had difference of opinions in lately especially.
Very good, Grace, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
So next on our list is Gunnison Clamp. So if we can invite Gunnison into the meeting. Hi, Gunnison.
Hello, just a second, trying to start my video. All right, I keep pressing the start video button and it's not doing it like the other two has been for me. But can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great, and I have, I have a lot of getting to see you this morning when we opened that time capsule, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in our meeting.
Right.
You did a great job. I know speaking is something you're really good at. So here we go, I'm going to ask you a question. In your opinion, what are the most important qualities for a youth city councillor to have?
Well, I sure am a lot better equipped to ask this que, sorry, to answer this question than I was a year ago. I learned so much about what's required of a councillor in my past term. And among other things, number one, of course, is the ability to lead. As a role model for youth in Montrose, have the ability to lead and to lead well. And also, I think critical thinking and decision-making skills are important. Because when you're a Montrose youth city councillor, of course, you're not making decisions for yourself, you're making decisions for, on behalf of all the youth in the city of Montrose. So being able to make good decisions on behalf of them as you think they would want those decisions made is definitely important. There are definitely a few other qualities. Of course, you got to be able to work as a team. Being able to socialize well with members of the community. Ask them about what they might want improved, what they might want us to work on. Good communication skills are as well. So a multitude of things. And all of those are important qualities for a youth councillor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next person is Josephine Coulter.
Hi.
Hi, you can hear us all right, Josephine?
Yes, I can.
And do you go by Josie or Josephine?
Josie.
All right, now we can even see you. What is one thing that you would like to change in the community and why?
I would say one thing I would want to change in the community would be the drug use, I think that can be seen throughout the community. I would really want to put an end to it, but you know, that's hard and maybe just not as much of it, because it can be really evident and seen in some areas of town. And I just, I would really like to change that to better the community.
Good, thank you, I think that's great.
Thank you.
And next we have Zach Oldroyd.
Hello.
Hi, Zach.
Hi.
All right, good to see you. This is councillor Dave Frank. And my question for you is, what do you think is the biggest challenge or issue facing youth in our community today?
I, I think especially during this pandemic, we, at least teens are struggling a little bit with communication and not being able to see their friends. And I think I would want to see that. I think we could help that through things like Zoom, doing fun activities online and just trying to increase communication to those who feel that they're kind of left out right now.
Excellent answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to me, I guess. And Mari Wilson.
Hello.
Hey, good evening, Mari. This is councillor Roy Anderson, how are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Oh, good, we can see you.
Sorry, my dad just came in, okay.
I guess you can hear us. No coaching.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is one of your greatest achievements? Tell us how you achieved this goal.
Okay, for me, I used to do competitive dance a couple of years ago. And one of my greatest achievements from that was winning first place overall at a competition. Like so many times, I've gotten third place, gotten second place. But the first time I got first place, that was really a big achievement for me. And how I achieved that is like, when I started getting third place, I scheduled more practices with my teacher and I did my own workouts on my own. And then eventually got second place. And then I just stepped it up another level and I eventually got first place.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Michaela, do you have any words you want to say or do you want me to wrap it up?
Sure, I would just thank all of our applicants for coming tonight and thank city council too for asking those questions. And if council has any questions for Kaylee or I as coordinators, we'd be happy to answer those as well.
Oh, I think there's six or eight, right?
So we have, you guys have to answer the rest of the questions on the list.
Yeah.
Thank you for the work that you guys put into organizing this. And thank you to all of the youth who have applied to be on our youth city council. We appreciate you making the time this evening to join us. We appreciate you taking that bold move in front of us and in front of the public to answer a question without knowing at the time what that was going to be. And we really think you all did a great job. We're so excited to get to know you all more through this next year. So thank you. Any other words?
Great job. Yeah, excellent.
Okay, next on our agenda item is Resolution 2020-20, which is council consideration of Resolution 2020-20, setting November 3rd, 2020 as the hearing date for the annexation of the Woodgate Edition Number Four. I will turn it over to senior city planner, Amy Schur.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here a moment, my presentation. Sorry, now I'm having technical difficulties on my end. Can you see that okay?
We sure can, yep.
Is it a full screen or just the present, the whole screen of it?
Full-screened logo right now. Now there's the, now that we can see your menu items as well.
All right, that's going to have to do.
That'll work.
All right, so this is the annexation schedule for the Woodgate Edition Number Four. We had the city council work session overview on September 14th. And then tonight, as you mentioned, is the resolution to set a hearing date. We'll have the planning commission zoning hearing coming up on October 14th. And then the first and second reading of the annexation and zoning ordinances in November. So this parcel, the annexation, is located east of South Townsend Avenue and west of Woodgate Avenue, as you can see by this orange parcel. And it's in between Oak Grove Road and Odell Road. So this parcel is just under half an acre. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water and city service area. It is urbanizing in this area. More than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. It's actually surrounded by city limits on all sides. The annexation of this property will actually clean up an orphaned parcel of land that's surrounded by city land. And the city is applying for this annexation on behalf of the landowner in support of the upcoming Woodgate Road realignment project. So the proposed zoning for this parcel is going to be B3 at the next planning commission meeting. The B3 General Commercial District is intended for a large variety of uses that require large storage areas to conveniently serve customers. And as you can tell from this zoning map, the zoning of the surrounding area is B2, kind of to the west and the south, and B3 to the north. And then a little bit of R1B, Small State District, to the east of that parcel. So in our comprehensive plan, Land Use Chapter Three in the Future Land Use Map, this black arrow points to it, it's a little small dot on this map, but it's actually listed as general commercial in our Future Land Use Map. And as you can tell by the description here, the proposed zoning of B3 fits in exactly as intended as general commercial in our comprehensive plan. So the staff analysis, the area is urbanizing, as I mentioned, and it's surrounded by city limits. An annexation agreement is not going to be required as part of this annexation. It is proposed, the proposal is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare, our city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. And staff will be recommending approval of the annexation and the B3 General Commercial District. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I hope. Amy, it's kind of hard to tell from the picture in our packet, but I wondered if the car wash that's along Woodgate, is any of that inside this property?
No.
Okay, so this is just that vacant kind of triangle of land.
Yeah, where you see all the signs right now posted.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, did you have some clarification you wanted? Oh, he's gone, he was there and he's gone.
Sorry, yeah, I was just going to, I guess, remind that, if there's any of the public listening, so we've been talking to a lot of residents about this. But this is just the hearing portion, you know, a little more, we go into a little more detail at the planning commission, when the zoning and the actual annexation stuff gets set there. But just wanted to chime in with that.
That is a great reminder to the process. So we are setting a schedule. And if the public wants to comment about the actual annexation or the proposed zoning, that would take place at the planning commission meeting. But tonight, the vote is simply about the schedule.
Correct.
That being said, if there's no more questions from council, I will ask if we do have any public comment about the schedule. Do we have any folks in our Zoom waiting area who wish to speak?
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you very much. In that case, it would be appropriate for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I've moved to adopt Resolution 2020-20 as presented.
Also, I think that.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion or points for clarification by council? Seeing none, please go. Okay, great, we're back from our vote and that passed unanimously to set that schedule. The next item on our agenda tonight is item 10, the Unrined Edition Two Annexation. And the council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Unrined Edition Two. I will turn it over to senior planner, Amy Schur.
All right, thank you. And you see my presentation?
Not yet, we see you.
Okay. Let's try that again.
Oh, it's coming, I think, there we go, now we can see it.
All right. I'm just going to leave it on that same view again instead of messing with it this time. All right, so the following is the annex. All right, so the following is the annexation schedule for the Unrined Edition Number Two. On August 17th, we had the Council Work Session Overview. September 1st was the resolution to set a hearing date. On September 9th, we had the Planning Commission Zoning Hearing. And then tonight is the reading of the annexation hearing and the annexation ordinance, and the first reading of the zoning ordinance, and then October 20th will be the second reading. So this map shows the location of the Unrined Edition. It's this little orange slither of a parcel that goes north and south, and then just a little bit to the east and west, and the black arrow shows that parcel. It's actually located just west of Townsend Avenue, and it's between Odell Road and Ogden Road. So this parcel, it's shown here on this map by this yellow outline, it is .87 acres. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water and city sewer service area. It is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to the city limits. The annexation of this property is actually being done to clean up an orphaned parcel of land that was not annexed into the city in 2002 with the parent parcel, which is the parcel directly to the east. This orphaned parcel was actually added by court order to the parent parcel back in 2008. And this remained in the county since that time, so we're just cleaning up that little orphaned parcel of land there. So as you can tell on this zoning map, the zoning of the surrounding area is B2. That's what the parent parcel is actually zoned, that's what they are recommending for zoning for this parcel, so that it's all zoned the same. And there's B3 General Commercial in the area, as well as P Public to the west, that's the river area. So the B2 Highway Commercial District is intended to provide for businesses oriented to serving the motoring public. This district provides for the convenient exchange of goods and services along the major thoroughfares of the city. And on September 9th, at the Planning Commission Meeting, they did recommend approval of the B2 zoning for this parcel. This map just shows the annexation map for your reference and what the actual parcel looks like. There's kind of an odd shape there. So in our comprehensive plan, Land Use Chapter, this little parcel of land is actually listed as either general commercial and also some of it is under parks and open space. And this fits in nicely as well with the recommended zoning for the parcel. So in our analysis, an annexation agreement is not being required for this annexation. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth is contiguous to city limits, which makes it eligible for annexation. Proposal is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare with the city's annexation policies and with the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the B2 zoning at their last meeting, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the annexation and the B2 Highway Commercial District.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Sure.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this annexation and zoning? Okay, so this is a multi-step process tonight, and we will accept public comment at each piece of the process. So first we have a resolution that is a finding of fact. Then we have an ordinance that's the first reading to annex the property. And then we have an ordinance that is the first reading to zone the property. And at each of those stages, we'll have public comment and we'll have a City Council vote. So if there's not questions from Council, then I would take public comment about Resolution 2020-21, which is the finding of fact for the annexation.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then next, we have Ordinance 2509, first reading. And this is Council Consideration of Ordinance 2509 on first reading, which is an ordinance for the annexation of the Unrined Edition Two. And before I open a public hearing, I'll ask if any counselors-
Do you wanna do a motion?
Oh, I do want to do a motion, thank you. I was-
I move that we pass Resolution 2020-21.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second on the, we do, we have three votes on this process. Okay, go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Okay, that motion passed unanimously, and now we're back to continue with the process. So we're on Ordinance 2509, which is the first reading of the annexation. And during this part of the process, we will hold a public hearing. So I will officially open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment for this Ordinance 2509.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'll close the hearing, and I will request a motion.
Madam-
Go ahead, Don.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2509 on first reading as presented.
Second.
We've got a first and a second, any further concerns? Okay, please vote. Great, thank you, and the motion passed unanimously. So now, Item 11 is Ordinance 2510, which is the first reading. And this is Council Consideration of Ordinance 2510 on first reading, and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the Unrined Edition Two as B2 Highway Commercial District. And Senior Staff, Senior Planner Amy Sharp has presented this information to the Council. And I will open a public hearing if there's any comments from the public. So that hearing is open.
I'm seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the hearing. Are there any additional comments or concerns or questions from Council? And then we can do a motion.
Move to pass Ordinance 2510 on first reading as presented, second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Any further questions or deliberations? Please go ahead and vote. Thank you, that passed unanimously. Next on our agenda tonight is Item 12, which is 2020 Sanitary Sewer Cured-in Place Pipe Bid Award. And this is Council Consideration of an Award Recommendation for the 2020 Sanitary Sewer Cured-in Place Pipe Bid. I will ask Utilities Manager David Reese to tell us a little bit about this, Tom Kuster. We can't hear you, David, you got unmute. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, before us, we have the consideration of the bid award to In situ Form Technologies for our cured-in-place sewer lining program. We've been using this process for several years, and it's a low-cost method of basically restoring the structural integrity of the sanitary sewer pipes by installing a pipe inside of the existing pipe. And we've used a number of contractors over the years. Previously, we've used Granite Inliner for this, but they were unable to complete the project this fall. And so we bid this out here a few weeks ago, and In situ Form was the only bid that we got on the project. And they were well within the budget for the project. So we are recommending an award not to exceed $200,000 to In situ Form to complete the 2020 sewer rehab project. With that, I'll take any questions.
Is this different than the pipe bursting, where you put something in and then bust out the outer shell? In this case, does the old pipe stay intact with just a new pipe inside of it?
Yes, the old pipe stays intact. Once the new pipe cures out, it basically restores the, it reestablishes the structural integrity of the pipe as if the old pipe wasn't there, but the old pipe actually does stay intact around the new pipe.
Is it very thick? I mean, but can you only do this so many times and does that keep decreasing the diameter, or is it not very thick?
The liner is between five and six millimeters thick, so it's fairly thin, much similar to a plastic PVC sewer pipe.
Okay, thank you.
So it's similar to taking the glue inside of a bottle and letting glue dry inside of the bottle?
Yes, pretty similar.
Any other questions for our Utilities Manager? I don't see any, so I would accept the motion.
And I'll make a motion to award the bid for cured-in-place lining of sanitary sewers for, to In situ Form Technologies LLC for not to exceed the amount of $200,000.
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And that motion passed unanimously. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is Item 13, Staff Reports. Are there any department heads who wish to update Council about anything tonight? And after we check in with them, I'll come over to your table.
I'm seeing none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Then I'll turn it over to the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and our City Attorney. Anything from, any public information, anything we need to know?
I don't have anything tonight.
Next is City Council Comments, and I'll just go down the line.
Uh, now, I'd just like to comment, I think Michaela and Kayla are doing a great job with the Council. And it's so impressive to deal with these young people, see their intuition and their interest in what we want. I'd like to thank you for that.
Okay, well then I'll take this opportunity to remind all the community that City Council is meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 to walk the La Rosa Trailhead, near La Rosa Park, to walk near the trail at North Ninth Street. If you've been following along, you know that we recently talked at a work session about doing some sidewalk improvements in the area. And Council felt it would be very helpful to see the sidewalks and to hear from community members that live in the neighborhood about which parts of the sidewalk infrastructure would most, make the most sense in terms of what we look at doing with city budget. So we'll be meeting tomorrow, the public is invited to join us. And I know our community outreach manager has been out there letting, getting the word out in that particular neighborhood. But anyone from the community is welcome to join us, and that's at 5:30 tomorrow. And we're meeting at the trailhead at North Ninth Street. So I think that's a neat thing to look forward to. Okay, great, well I think that would be the end, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, let's do that by acclamation. Thank you very much if you joined us tonight, we appreciate it, and thank you, everyone.